I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission November 24th, 2020 meeting at 6:00 PM. It is 20 after and we're starting. First item of business, we do have a quorum, is to approve the meeting minutes from the October 22nd, 2020 regular meeting.
Move for approval of the minutes.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Holliday.
Our second.
Second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. First item of business, final plat Fred Waldron subdivision, section three, re-subdivision of lots 15 and 16 requested by Elkins surveying. Two existing lots on 1.91 acres, property located at 130 Elm Street, tax map 17M, group A, parcel one and two, R2 medium density residential zoning district property owned by Glenn D. Buchanan and Brad A. Dyer. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of you may have gotten or read already the email that I sent this afternoon. So this is a request to, really to square up these two lots on Elm Street. They went to Boza on October the 26th, and, excuse me, 27th, and they were denied their variance request. So this is an older section of Laverne. And let me just, so the property is zoned R1, and, excuse me, the property is zoned R2, and so the only reason they were going to Boza is because apparently in the last 25 years, they've built this garage that you can see here. The garage is right there. And so the garage was built, for whatever reason, on top of the property line. And so, of course, that's not allowed. So that set them up for a variance on October the 27th. And they were, I think, one foot or two feet off the property line, and Boza denied that because the ordinance calls for 10 feet, of course, for all accessory structures. So after that, they had to punt, so to speak, and there were several issues that needed to be worked out with the neighboring property. And so it took a while for them to come to a solution. But the plan that they submitted, and I'm zooming in here really close now, but you can see they've just skewed this line that separates the two properties. They've skewed it at an angle so that at all portions, it's 10 feet or more. I think one of those dimensions is 10.2 feet. So to ensure that it meets the setback requirement on the sides. They're preparing this property to sell, and that's how this all came up, is they're trying to just sell the property. So they're not doing anything except trying to get this building to become legal. So it looks like they've accomplished that if the neighbor is willing to sell a portion of their property so that the line can be redrawn. So that's it in a nutshell. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from members?
The property already been sold at this point.
Mr. Logan. Has the property-
They've not notified me. I don't believe it has, but they've not notified me.
Is there someone here? Would you mind coming to the podium and stating your name and address for the record, sir?
Doyle Elkins. Our address is 520 West Lidle Street, Suite B, Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. The mayor's question was, has the property already sold, or is this preparing for sale?
Mr. Dyer spoke with me today. I believe it's under contract, but it's not sold.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
A motion for approval from Mr. Holliday.
Second.
We have a second from who's first there? Mr. Coats? Second from Mr. Coats. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Thank you for working with us. That will move on to our next item, under new business. Oh, I'm sorry. Item number two under old business. Adoption of Planning Commission rules and procedure presented by Mayor Cole. Let Mayor Cole address this one.
Everyone should have a copy of the revisions, and it's simplified it way down from where we were. And unless anyone has anything, I would say this is pretty much, at this point, ready. It does reference back to Robert's Rules of Order. It does include, as far as the three deferrals, unwritten rule that we've had, making it a written rule for this board. And it references back to TCA code where appropriate.
Very good. Thank you, sir. I know we've worked hard on this. Legal department's gone over it. If there's any questions from the board, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion approved.
Motion to approve by?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now on to number three. First item under new business. Amendment to the site plan, Ahearn Rentals requested by Fulmer Engineering. Existing building on 3.7 acres located at 181 Industrial Boulevard, tax map 29, parcel 3.05, I-2 heavy industrial zoning district property owned by JPS Properties. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is for a site plan approval for a property located at 181 Industrial Boulevard. And this is, of course, Ahearn Rentals. And they moved into this property about 18 months ago, between 18 months and two years ago. And the request tonight, it is site plan approval, but they are proposing all groundwork and flat work. So they're not building any new structures, and they're not building any additions to any existing structures. And there on the zoning map, you can see it is zoned I-2, along with everything else that touches it. And there's some site photos. You can see the lifts that are currently stored out there on the site. And then this is the front of the building from Industrial. And you can see the signage there. It's basically a block and metal industrial building. And so this is the latest site plan they submitted to us. And everything in gray is shown as heavy-duty pavement. So this would be the areas that they're proposing to add pavement. And with that would be a request for a new driveway. And that would make it their second driveway. And the existing driveway is further to the north and west. And again, they're not adding any new buildings and no new structures. The site is 1.71 acres, excuse me, the site's 3.73 acres, and they're proposing 1.71 acres of heavy-duty pavement. And also are proposing new aluminum fencing around the perimeter of the site. And shows on the plan that the fencing will have a black finish when it's installed. And, let's see, they are adding, from the discussions at the sidewalk, from the discussions at the workshop, they're adding a sidewalk, and that's shown also on the plan. And that sidewalk will go along their entire frontage. And I believe that covers all of the items from the workshop, and so there's not any outstanding items undone from Mr. Lee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I'm trying to just understand, on C. point, 0.4, just trying to understand the, I guess it's some type of structure, right after you get into the second pull-in, if you're looking at it on the left, right where it squares off.
Name and address real quick for me, sir. Address that.
Jay Fulmer, 2002 Richard Jones Road, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
It's a rectangular box with two, three squares in it, if it looks like it.
On 0.4?
Yeah, yes, sir.
And the question is, as you come into the second entrance, what are the boxes around those? And that's, this is an erosion control plan, so that's inlet protection to keep any sediment from getting in the inlets and going to the pond.
Very good. Chairman, with the applicant working with us, with the sidewalks, the fence, and the widening of the entranceway, which we talked about with that, I'll make motion to accept a subpoena.
There's a motion to accept. We have a second. Second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next item, item number four. Site plan, Thornton's requested by Bard Solutions, property located at 113, 121, and 131 Charter Place, tax map 29, parcel 2.02 and 2.08. C2 Highway Service zoning district property owned by Robert T. and Mary H. Stroop. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This site plan request is for a new Thornton's that would be built on Charter, Charter Place, near Waldron Road on the south side of I-24. And this request is for a gas station and travel center that will serve passenger cars and lightweight trucks, as well as tractor trailers. And will also have scales for tractor trailers, as is typical in a large travel center like this. They're also building an 80-100 square foot retail and restaurant facility, and we'll get to that in just a minute. On the ortho, so you can see, this is the side of the former Driftwood Motel, and the blue roofs here show the buildings that are part of that, part of the Driftwood complex there. And so part of this project will be demolishing those buildings. And you see here in site photos, this is Charter Place that you're looking at, and there's stop sign right here. So part of this project will be to improve this intersection so that Charter Place will come out at Center Point Drive at the signalized intersection. And there's another photo. This is taken from the Dollar General site. And again, Thornton's is proposing to utilize all the property from the corner back to where the Driftwood buildings are today. And they also will, of course, be realigning Charter, and you can see that on the site So try to get close in here. So you can see these curves will be added so that Charter Place can be realigned and meet Center Point at the signalized intersection. So back to the 80-100 square foot building. That'll be located here where the red dot is. And then this rear part of the project is to serve tractor trailers and heavy trucks, and that's where parking will be for them. They can also refuel there or use the scales. And then autos, this is the canopy, the auto gas canopy, that sits closer to Waldron Road. So they're proposing 80-100 square feet for that retail and restaurant building. And the plan shows 2,600 square feet will go to a quick-serve restaurant. And so the common language for that would be a fast-food restaurant. So it'll be that style of restaurant that'll be also housed in the same 80-100 square And, let's see, they are, they have submitted, I know you all saw it two weeks ago, the materials board, and so that is up there at the podium tonight. Again, and you remember from two weeks ago that they have requested to use a material called Nitsihah? And so Nitsihah is a masonry-like product, although I don't know that it's through masonry, but it is a nice sample board. If you want to see the product up close and get an idea of what it, how durable it is, then it's there on the board. They are, Thornton's has been using Nitsihah across the country in a lot of locations. And I've realized it's also been being used by Walgreens and other retailers. And on a road trip about two years ago, I was in Missouri. My wife and I were traveling for Christmas, and there's a Walgreens there. It was in Poplar Bluff, Missouri. And it's built of Nitsihah, and I thought that the whole building was brick. And I actually commented to my wife, I was like, "That's one of the nicest Walgreens I've ever seen." And then come to find out, it's actually was Nitsihah. So it's interesting what they can do with different products. But I guess, I guess that product is becoming more and more common in the retail and restaurant world and the gas stations. But they did not have many comments at all, technical comments at the workshop. And they did, they did have a couple, those have been taken care of. And I believe that covers everything on this project. So I haven't received any comments since the, two weeks ago at the workshop. So, I mean, no comments from any of the Planning Commission. So not aware of anything that's come up with it. So that will complete the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions, comments for staff?
Question from the applicant, please.
Is the applicant here for this project? If he'd come to the podium, state your name and address.
Roy Hassel, 615 Third Avenue South, Nashville, Tennessee, 37210.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you working with us on the sidewalk and the height of the wall and the additional shrubbery and trees. Just one question, did we put a note on regarding the sidewalk off your property, if it was available, or did that get worked out, or were we talking to T.D. about that?
We showed the sidewalk being extended.
Okay.
And then do you have a note on there that says, depending on what happens with the neighboring property, we'll follow their lead on the extension or not?
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question about the restaurant portion that's attached to the building. Is it not going to be the same material as what the rest of the station, the gas station's going to be?
Short answer, no, sir. We just entered into a letter of agreement with Popeyes Chicken. So it'll be their standard building facade and their architectural veneer for the tenant shell there.
With that being an overlay?
Yeah, we would, wouldn't we need to see those materials as per the overlay?
Yes, sir. I, staff just learned today about this Popeyes, so this is, this is brand new. I was kind of throwing that today about noon, so I haven't had even time to talk to them about it. But yeah, I mean, if it's in the overlay, it's got to meet the overlay requirement. So there'll have to be a discussion with Popeyes about that.
My problem with that is, is your building looks very nice, but I don't want something attached to it that's not going to look nice.
Well, we're going to be their landlord, so we want it to look nice, too.
Thank you. With that being said, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, would we not be better off to proceed and then have Popeyes come back?
So it'd either be a faux or an even question.
If you're going to look at the overlay, you probably want to look at it as all one package.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you want to defer and get us the materials board before Popeyes and come back, if you want to proceed forward?
They're not that far along yet. If, respectfully, if we could have, you look at the building as submitted, and we would submit the Popeyes architectural package separately. And showing the tenant space on the site plan there, that's the configuration of their tenant shell that we will construct for them. But like I was saying, that since we're the landlord, you know, we reserve the right, you know, for approving those finishes on that building, and they would certainly be co-compliant. Would ask, respectfully, that you consider that separately, like in a follow-up application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be comfortable approving the Nitsihah product on the entire building, and then that would compel the applicant to come back for the change of exterior, you know, in the overlay district. But the applicant would have to understand, we are not approving the Popeyes standard of exterior.
No, that's perfectly clear. I understand.
Okay, we're approving the Nitsihah for-
For the whole building.
For the entire building.
As submitted.
And quite frankly, I'd really like for you to leverage your relationship with Popeyes that they look at putting their signage on your Nitsihah, because your building looks pretty nice.
Thank you.
It is a good-looking building.
Yeah, we'll certainly work on it.
If you'd be so kind as to put the materials board out front, I believe, is that Charles?
Yeah.
Mr. Rutledge is the only one that hasn't had an opportunity to kind of look at it.
Yes. So this is a faux stone veneer that's installed on a track system, so it's in panels. It's jointed together with like a caulk sealant, so there's no lines and seams on it. So it's a nice system. It doesn't fade over 20 years of its service life. You don't have to tuck point it, that could be brick. It's more resilient tomorrow, so.
And that'll be the whole building, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so there's a, there's a Wayne Scott around the base there, around four feet. There's like a little cap here of the stone cap, and then the brick veneer extends up there. And the other portions here are, there's like a red Nitsihah element, which is just another stone veneer product that's just flat.
Okay.
And that's used for the red staple elements around our entrance. And then there's this black field here that is installed behind the architectural louver system that's above our entryway.
Very good. Thank you, sir. That being said, any other questions or comments from the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Lee.
There's a discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Please, discussion.
If we could just add to the motion that the entire building is made out of the color board as presented, just to, just to put it into record.
So amended.
The motion with the color board being locked in. Correct, Mr. Coats?
No, second.
Second by Mr. Lee.
Verification.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Next item. Item number five has been deferred. Item number six, site plan, National Indoor RV Center requested by Fulmer Lucas, existing building on 11 acres, property located at 1201 Bridgestone Parkway, tax map 17, parcel 26, I-2 heavy industrial zoning district property owned by Old Dominion Freight Lines, Inc. Mr. Logan.
This site plan request is for the National Indoor RV Centers, and they're requesting to move into existing buildings at the corner of Bridgestone Parkway and Waldron Road. And this property was at the Board of Zoning Appeals earlier tonight, and did receive a special exception for RV sales and limited service in an I-2 district. So that special, special exception was granted at Boza, if you did not know. And there are three buildings on this site, and they're labeled appropriately, 1, 2, and 3. The corner building, as we discussed back in two weeks ago at the workshop, corner building is the red brick building, and it's a one-story and former home of Hoover, so a lot of folks refer to it as the Hoover Building. And that's what's shown there on the screen. And then building number two, or the middle building, is a, essentially, a garage or service center. It has a lot of bay doors, and this is where the National Indoor RV would like to do their service to their vehicles. And by the way, they specialize in luxury RV, luxury RVs, and that's what they're hoping to do on this site, is sell those and service those RVs. So this building here on the screen is 19,000 square feet approximately. And again, all this is zoned I-2, but the entire site does lie in the Waldron Road overlay district. So the entire site has to meet the requirements of that overlay district, and that's noted in the technical items. A previous site plan from this summer, it was in June of this year when Old Dominion was here, and they are responsible on that site plan for installing a new sidewalk along the entire frontage. So you'll see that note in your packet that the engineer, Mr. Fulmer, has noted that that sidewalk is supposed to be built and installed by Old Dominion. So just wanted to address that sidewalk question, if it came up. They do plan to close this access that's nearest to the corner, so that's noted, you'll see on your plan. They're going to close that permanently and not use it anymore. South of the corner building, as you go south, there's another driveway, and they plan to keep that one and utilize it. So that is shown on the plans. And this entire site is right at 11 acres, give or take, and it is zoned I-2 again. So here's a photo of present-day sidewalk, and so when the improvements were made to Waldron years ago, they did install sidewalks, of course, on Waldron. And this one is wrapped all the way around the corner and comes back quite a distance. So on that site plan from June, Old Dominion will have to connect here and install a sidewalk all the way down their frontage. Let's see, I think, I think that covers most everything. There are some displays, you'll notice on the plan, they plan to have RVs parked along most of these bays, and they would be displayed there for the public to see as they drive by. And previously, at the workshop, they talked about having RVs displayed at this ingress, egress at the corner. But now that it's closed, they, it's my understanding, they will not have any RVs displayed there at that corner. And there were no engineering comments, and the only technical items left are that all the buildings and structures must meet the Waldron Road overlay district, and then the accompanying materials, which are architectural materials board and the color architectural elevations that are required. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Question, Cole?
Yes, I have a couple of questions with this. We may want to get to applicant.
Get on my mind, sir. Name and address one more time.
Jay Fulmer, 2002 Richard Jones Road, Nashville, Tennessee. And David Hennessy is also here to speak.
Thank you very much. On the three technical items, I think that's going to be our first question. No materials board, no elevations, and meeting the overlay district standards.
So Old Dominion was supposed to be here tonight with those materials to show you how they were going to clad that, the center building, and we were just informed that they deferred. And so this is a unique situation where National Indoor is renting, or they're going, they have a lease for a couple of years on the office building, the old Hoover building that does comply with materials, and then the center building. Their intent was for all those bay doors in the center building to always be down because their service is very limited. It's just fine-tuning the coaches before they're sold, or very minor service. But we knew the overlay was going to be in effect, and it was Old Dominion's responsibility to bring that up to code. It's also their responsibility to install the sidewalks and to install a new access drive. There's a breezeway between these two buildings that was going to be removed in order for the coaches to be able to drive through the two buildings. And now we're in somewhat of a stressful position because we, we don't control those improvements right away, and they're trying to get operational as soon as they can, simply because the, what their, their overall goal is to find a permanent home. And with this being a couple-year solution, every month is critical. And with this being a couple of year solution, every month is critical. They do sell very high-end coaches that do look attractive when presented. And, and the middle building is intended to be improved. But what I'm trying to figure out with, Kyle gave us some guidance earlier, but I know Randolph isn't here. I'm not sure if, if there's any way that we can work administratively with them to try to figure out how we can split up our permits for, for C.O.s. And, because I know it's very rare that you would ever approve use of a building without knowing how it's going to be brought to code. The drive on Waldron is intended to be temporary while they're, you know, fixing the new access on Bridgestone. The Bridgestone access would be the primary ingress and egress. What, they'll end up closing it just the way it is today with the fence, indirect any visitors to the Bridgestone access. But I, I'm not sure if the, if, if there could be consideration that if we come back with a, with some sort of presentation on the, how, how the center building will be brought up to code, if that's something that can be done administratively, if it's something that you need to vote on. But in the meantime, we'd like to get going with the improvements that we're able to get going with. And I don't know if there's any type of, you know, limited use of these buildings while Old Dominion fulfills their obligations to us.
Yes, sir. Do we have any questions or comments for the applicant?
I spoke with Old Dominion this afternoon. They called me to let me know that they were deferring, but they also were wanting to set up a meeting to discuss different materials for their materials board. So I don't believe at this time they even have it determined which materials they're using for these buildings. They're also still working on some of the changes to their site plan that were, that was brought up at the workshop. But they're not, I mean, they're, they're supposed to show up sometime next week to discuss what, what materials, at least with me, but that may not fly with the board, depending on what they bring.
Right.
So from my standpoint, I don't know how we are able to move forward on this with it not complying with our overlay district. And I, I don't know that, and I, I did have some questions as far as like, how many employees do y'all, are y'all planning to have for this facility?
I would, David, answer those questions.
I would estimate probably, in the area of probably 25 to 30 employees.
Okay, and where are they parking their vehicles?
Well, there's, I mean, it's an 11-acre lot. We'll be having employees who will park in the back, in the back of the lot.
Okay, they're parking in the back?
Yeah, there's plenty, there's plenty of parking in the front.
Is there any ADA parking? Because I don't see that, that marked anywhere on here.
We're going to be, all the publicly available parking in the front will be ADA compliant. So we're, we'll be adding striping to the front. It indicates that we'll be removing some of the sidewalk and providing ADA access to the office building.
Okay, I would, I would think that would need to be noted on here.
Absolutely.
So that we know where that's located. And then you're, you're going to have RVs in front of the bays? Is that correct?
Yeah, RVs will be displayed. We won't use the bays in the front at all. That'll just be for display. We're putting power outlets for them, so the coaches will just be displayed in the front. And we'll use the entrance in the rear for the service coaches to come in. They'll come in the back of the, back of the building.
Okay. It was my understanding per our discussion that we wouldn't be using the Waldron Road entrance. Am I mistaken?
In, in an emergency or a temporary situation, we could get by with that, but it's imperative that we have the main entrance to come in, because we're talking about 45-foot luxury coaches, and it's just too busy of an entrance to be pulling coaches in and out of there.
Absolutely.
It's far safer to come around, as it shows on the plan, further down to have an entrance in there. And that, that, because it was denied that we can, that the original entrance further down on the property could be a dual-use entrance for both of us, since Old Dominion was using that as well, which makes the importance of having the additional entrance in the middle of the property so that we can access it. And then they're going to have access between the two buildings in the breezeway area so that we can actually pull the coaches through, so that we have access to the back. Because without the other side of the building where the driveway was initially, when we first contracted the lease with them, it stated that we would be a dual-access driveway, that we would come in through the back of the building. But that's, that's not going to happen now, which is the reason for the necessity of the additional driveway, so we can enter to the sun, front of it and through the buildings to get into the back.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, with all the, the issues we have here, this board is not, has not done contingencies. Until this all gets resolved, I mean, we, we can't really move forward. I just don't see a way we can do that. You know the issues that you have. I think if you get them sorted out, you should come back and we'll take a look. But in the meantime, I would suggest just to defer until you get where you need to be.
I would strongly recommend a deferral. Just off of the overlay issue, you know, those are things that we need to know. With the side entrance being brought back and now wanting to be used, we really need to discuss that in regards to Waldron Road with 40 to 60-foot coaches, because they do swing very wide. So in my opinion, it would take most of the two lanes to get into that driveway.
Right.
I would recommend requesting for deferral. Let's bring this back to workshop. Hopefully, we can get Old Dominion here with some materials boards and answers for us, and we'll proceed forward.
And, and basically, our concern is, I mean, I, I feel in my conversations that I've had with Old Dominion, I mean, I, I feel they're going to comply with that. They really don't have a choice not to, because if, if it's not us, it's going to be the next tenant, and that's going to be the thing. But our biggest concern is, are we able to come up with an arrangement where we can continue to do business while they are, you know, if, if it's agreed upon that they meet that, can we have an exception where we're able to, to do business while this, these repairs are being done, and it's not dragged out as far as our turn? Because we're, you know, right now, we have a, a year and a half lease with two six-month options, so we plan on being there two, two and a half years. We are looking in the area for a permanent facility, which would be far bigger than what this is. Normally, we do storage, indoor storage as well, and our, our buildings generally average 175,000 to 200,000 square foot indoor storage facilities. So this one is just starting out as just a sales and service initially, but that's, you know, what we plan on, on moving towards. And, you know, as I explained in, in the meeting before, you know, from a res, from a revenue standpoint for the city, you know, it's, it's a very high-line operation that we run, and we're talking about, you know, 20 to 25 projected units per month at an average cost of $200,000 to $250,000 per copy. So you're talking roughly $300,000 to $400,000 a month in sales tax revenue for the facility. So I mean, I think it's definitely a win-win situation for the city. And again, you know, we do everything first class as far as, you know, what we're doing with the facility and the customers and all that stuff. I mean, that facility's been sitting vacant for three years. There's not a whole lot going on with it. So, you know, our, our biggest thing is, you know, we just want to be able to get up and running and, and do what we need to do. And, you know, we're willing to comply on our end with everything that we can do to make that happen.
Absolutely. We just, we have to get all technical items cleared. And as Mr. Coats said, traditionally, we don't do contingencies or anything. We either vote with the facts that we have, or as I respectfully said, you may want to defer, bring it back to workshop. Let's get everything cleared up with Old D, and proceed forward.
Yeah, doesn't sound like we have much of a choice, so that, but yeah, okay.
All right, so we'll see you next month at the workshop, and we'll, we'll get through this together.
Okay, is there, did you say that they were having a meeting, Dave? I was under the impression by them that they were having a meeting, what you guys, before that, you were saying about-
They reached out last week. I returned their phone call. They did not call back until today. So of course, with the holiday, there will be no meeting this week, but there will be one next week.
Okay.
But that's just with me. That's not with all the other members of the board. If they're reaching out to them, they have to schedule those. We don't meet collectively due to sunshine laws. So many times, they reach out to us individually.
Okay.
Officially deferring. We're going to defer this item, and we'll discuss it at workshop, gentlemen. Thank you. Have a question, Mr. Holiday?
No, I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Item number seven has been deferred, which is related to this item. So we'll be moving on to item number eight. Final plat, 400 New Sanford, replat of Lot 2 requested by Kimley Horn. Three existing lots on 55.65 acres. Property located at 400 New Sanford Road, tax map 29, parcel 5.14, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Prologis Exchange, LLC. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. This is a final plat request on New Sanford Road at 400 New Sanford. The property is zoned I-2 Heavy Industrial, and the total acreage of this site is 55.65 acres. And due to the fact that no new utilities are being installed and no new roads are being built, there's no preliminary plat that's required for this item. And the, the purpose of the plat is to take the existing lot, which is called Lot 2, and divide it into three new lots. And there's some photos of the site, and we're talking about this area that's to the right of New Sanford Road. In this photo, it's to the right or to the north. And you see the existing distribution center in the, way in the background. And here's another look at the site. It's just become partially wooded over the years. And you can see there's no sidewalk in this area, just a gravel shoulder on the road. And this is a photograph of what's in your packets, the hard copy. So you can see how they're proposing to subdivide the 55.65 acres. Of note, in the middle is a 55-foot-wide access easement, and that's shown hatched on your plan. And some of this is related to, you may remember the site plan that came through, I believe it was in June, June or July, that was for a new industrial building, probably a distribution center that will be built in this location. And going back to the map, so there's, most of you probably know what I'm talking about. There's a 90-degree curve here, so this is the area where the photographs were taken. And also of note, on the G.I.S., for some reason, it has essentially this tail that goes down that was highlighted, but this does not involve any of this parcel that is close to Industrial Boulevard. So this corner lot is not part of it. It may look like that on the G.I.S. imagery, but it's not. It's just this L-shaped portion. And there were only a few items of planning nature two weeks ago. One of those was a void and vacate note. And that's been taken care of. The other one was to correct the vicinity map and add the zoning. They've done all of that, so there were no engineering comments to speak of, so they've done everything, and that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
The Board will make a motion to accept this submitted.
We have a motion to accept this submitted by Mr. Coats?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holiday. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Item number nine, subdivision acceptance, cottages at Lake Forest Phase 6A. Property located south of Nixon Way, requested by Womble and Associates, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Leach?
They have completed the punch list. I went out and inspected it today, so punch list is complete, and everything else has been completed per acceptance.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments?
Move for acceptance.
We have a motion to accept from Mr. Holiday?
Second.
Second by Mr. Coats. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Yes, sir.
So this should be a recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this board doesn't accept it.
Sorry. My apologies. We'll take, entertain a motion for favorable recommendation.
Motion for favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Second. We have a second by Mr. Holiday. Pardon. Mr. Coats. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, subdivision acceptance, cottages at Lake Forest Phase 6B. Property located south of Nixon Way, requested by Womble and Associates, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Leach?
I inspected it today. The punch list was completed, so they're good to go for engineering.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We'll be-
Motion for favorable recommendation.
We have a motion for favorable. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11, subdivision acceptance, Holland Dale Estates, Phase 70. Property located on Holland Bridge Drive, requested by Womble and Associates, R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Leach?
Inspected today. Punch list was completed, so engineering items are complete.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board?
Appreciation from Mr. Leach. Motion for favorable recommendation.
We have a motion for favorable. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And our final item, bonds and letters of credit updates. Mr. Leach?
In the back of the packet, you'll see our current outstanding, well, not outstanding, but current bonds, letters of credit we have on record. As you'll note, there's not many, and assuming that the, these acceptances and a few others go through in the next few months, there'll be significantly less. What that tends to indicate is there's not a whole lot of lots left. Brothers Crossing has indicated that they're going to bring in their bonding documents so that they'll be able to open up their Phase 1, which will be, I want to say 80 to 100 lots or so. But other than that, we don't have a whole lot on the horizon. So just a note as to where we are. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. And thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.